Good evening. You can call a meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to join us. Roll call.
Garrick?
Here.
Grinberg?
Here.
Pepcorn?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here.
Library registration for libraries, fall, summertime, our storytime series for toddlers, preschoolers, and families is open. The three 14-week series starts September 9th, and the program is offered to all three library locations. Fall/winter hours at the library begin again on September 8th as well. The downtown Carlson libraries will be open Sunday from 1:00 to 6:00, except holidays through Memorial Day. The library's annual summer reading program ended August 10th. This year, 2,311 children registered for the program and completed 32,245 hours of reading and 6,270 hours of activities. In addition, teens turned in 240 book logs and adults turned in 778 book logs. So, a lot of people did a lot of reading this summer. Interesting about apartments, planning, the apartment vacancy rate in the metro declined below 8% for the first time in three years. The vacancy rate was 7.93 in June 2019 survey. The last time the vacancy rate was below 8 was in September 2016. Fargo has issued permits for 80 apartment units this year, far below the average of 1,058 permitted every year from 2014 to 2018. Police, found out some of our policemen are pretty good shots, huh, chief? Several members of the police department attended the North Dakota Police Officers Association Conference recently in Grand Forks. At the governor's 20 pistol shoot during the conference, eight Fargo officers placed out of the 20 spots. Pretty good. Were you there, chief, or no? You didn't place with a shooting, or, okay. There was a discussion at the conference about intelligent-led policing. Members of the Bismarck and Grand Forks Police Department recently spent time in Fargo to learn how Fargo does intelligent-led policing and the philosophies behind it, and they were impressed with our team. I heard they had good comments. And there has been some news lately about the changes to retail theft and shoplifting policies by the police department. To explain these changes, it is a fact that many big-box stores in Fargo have policies of non-engagement or non-confrontation when it comes to shoplifting. Instead, they watch surveillance video after checking for losses in inventory and then will make delayed theft reports for insurance purposes on unsolvable cases. These policies mean more time for PD to do process paperwork for sake of insurance. For this reason, the police department and the prosecutor's office have changed practices and are meeting with management and loss prevention people at the different stores. You still, if you have a package stolen from your doorstep, or if you have a theft in your community, or any department store, or in the shops downtown, we will send an officer and we will prosecute for shoplifting. We've not changed any of these policies. It's mainly policies for the big-box stores. Narcotics Intelligent Detectives, or the Narcotics and Intelligent Detectives from West Fargo, Cass County, and BCI will be moving into the Fargo Police Department building to team with Fargo's Narcotics and Intel units. Being together will facilitate better communication amongst investigators and allow for better teamwork and larger investigation as well to be a force multipliers for each other on smaller investigations. Jurisdiction does not matter much to drug dealers, and this will allow law enforcement to work together throughout the county. This is a great step. Everybody's going to work together, and we'll probably get a little rent out of it, right, chief? Solid waste. In addition to the regular collection of residential and commercial garbage and recycling, to date in 2019, the Division of Solid Waste has collected 2,850 tons of yard waste and grass clippings, which contributes to the compost operation at 7th and 45th Avenue, or 45th Street North. In addition, landfill employees have handled 5,676 tons of wood waste so far this year in forms of trees, branches, brush, and general wood waste such as pallet and wood chips. A bit more because of the storm, but it's been quite a bit of wood. Lastly, the city recently welcomed representatives from Region 8 Housing and Urban Development to highlight three significant events in Fargo that have been in the works for the past two years. Major renovations were completed at New Horizons, which was the first all-accessible housing project in Fargo, which opened in 1973. Today, its 98 units are full updates to keep up with modern needs. The former Community Homes complex has also reopened as the arbors at McCormick Park and includes a new community center and 186 completed renovated units. Finally, the planning department worked intermediates with HUD Office in Denver and property owners to transfer 15, or 52 units worth of vouchers to Fargo. These vouchers were going to go back and be absorbed in the U.S. Treasury and instead will be assigned to properties in Fargo. This is $52,300 monthly budget authorized for 20 years, which is basically a million-dollar group of quite a bit of money that we would have left on the table, which will provide assistance for approximately 72 units. In total, 276 units have been modernized and contracted with HUD for the next 20 years to assist families in Fargo. Also, HUD recently gave us a letter of intent of giving us some money for community homes and for... Oh, here it is. On behalf of Secretary Ben Carson, he has told us that our community development block grant will be $760,000, and we're going to get a home investment partnership program for $454,000. So, we've been busy with the HUD Office. They're very impressed with City of Fargo, and they're very much impressed with Nicole Crutchfield, so I have to give her an award that she was given at this event. So, they did a bus tour all of Fargo and kind of looked around Fargo and saw all the different projects we had going. And Commissioner Strand, you've been very worried about affordable housing. We found that we're doing a great job, and they're very impressed with the work that our planning department had done and what had gone on. This is one of two states that figured out this voucher thing, that transferred it into two states. They've never done that throughout the country. It was termed as brilliant, and I want to commend my planning department for doing that because it did save housing for other people that normally wouldn't have those vouchers. So, for us, it's fantastic. So, on a bus tour, where she spent almost two days on a bus going through all our different projects throughout the community, Nicole got this from Evelyn Lynn, who's the Section 8 HUD representative. And it says, "Cert certificate of excellent in U.S. Housing and Urban Development, multifamily west region. Nicole Crutchfield, City of Fargo, North Dakota, is hereby recognized for her leadership role in preserving affordable housing through Section 8BB Affordable Transaction Fargo, North Dakota, August 22, 2019." Congratulations.
Speech.
She's bashful, but they really felt that we do a great job in this community. And I know, John, you've been worried about affordable housing, but there's some really great partners in their community right now. Staff members from the City of Grand Forks recently toured our new city hall building as well as the Rocco Garage downtown as an inspiration for their plans to remodel and/or renovate their city hall in downtown. They found that we're really doing some awesome things in Fargo, and people are noticing. They went through and checked our efficiency, how our offices are working, and how things are going throughout the city, and we're very impressed what we have been doing in the last several years. So, I'm very pleased about that. Tonight, we're going to show three short videos from the police department highlighting offers Samantha, Ian, and Sam.
Ian Kriston, 23-years-old, from Mandaline, Illinois. Ian Kriston, 23-years-old, from Mandaline, Illinois. So far, the training process has been fantastic. There's a huge focus on fundamentals and doing things the right way. There's a certain expectation and standard that they hold us to, and just trying to achieve that every single day to better ourselves and become the best officers that we can be. It's been a great process. It's been fun as well, getting to know everybody that we're beginning this journey with, getting to know other people in the command staff, and just to see how Fargo does things has been really fantastic and a great onboarding and introduction to the department. My father's a funeral director, and that had a huge influence on me as a child, just seeing him interact with people and helping them on the worst day of their life, to be able to have that ability to help and influence a community and just be there for any problem that arises. That was a big influence to want to get involved in law enforcement. Recently, here in Fargo, I began training in Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu with the inspiration to get into law enforcement, and it's just something that I've slowly began to fall in love with. It's kind of taken over a competitive athletic side, but then also it's functionality and application to law enforcement. It's just been really great. I'm Ian, and I'm a Fargo police officer.
My name's Sam Otto. I'm 25-years-old, and I'm from Park River, North Dakota. Training process has been interesting. Going into it, I didn't expect it to be so involved. Instruction was fantastic, and they kept it fresh, too. They're rotating in new instructors from all different parts of the department, from patrol to the command staff to narcotics, investigations, and they were able to correlate that into the training. I grew up hunting and fishing and had a decent firearms background. With handguns, not so much. I didn't start shooting handguns for the last few years, but I've done a little bit of repetition and then also just through the training process to just the sheer round count that they allowed us to shoot, and the training that was offered was great. And everybody, including myself, bettered themselves as marksmen. I have no family in law enforcement. It's something that's been in the back of my mind since I was in college. Right out of college, I ran an independent contracting company, doing some telecommunications work, and then I worked for CenturyLink here in Fargo in the telecommunications field as well. And with Fargo's onboarding program and the opportunity that they offer, someone with no prior experience, it's a fantastic opportunity for applicants like myself to probably go through the process. I'm Sam, and I'm a Fargo police officer.
Are you getting on this? What? My name is Samantha LaSham. I'm 24-years-old, and I'm from Imberg Grove Heights, Minnesota. It's been pretty intense. Kind of came into it not really expecting or not knowing what to expect, I guess, obviously with seven others. It's a little bit helpful to not feel so alone. With that, we've had a lot of competition, and we've been able to push each other through it all, and it's been kind of fun. It's kind of one of those things, like, if you don't laugh about it, you'll probably cry. So, previously, I was actually, I've been a social worker for four years in Minnesota. Obviously, being a social worker, I was surrounded by a lot of the same people that police officers are associated with, and through that time, I really gained a passion for what they do and how they serve, and something I was very interested in. Fargo is my home, it's my community, and it was something that I wanted to do and give back to my community and continue to serve in the best way possible, and it's kind of why I made a transition in a career, and here we are. I am Sam, and I'm a Fargo police officer.
Yeah, I think you're going to have to keep working at that, bud. Keep training. Is a motion to move the, approve the order agenda of moving Items 6 from consent agenda to regular agenda and continuing Item 40 to Monday, October 21st, 2019 at 5:15? So, moved. Is there a second? Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the August 12th, 2019 meeting?
Still moving. Second.
Seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. There are a motion to approve the consent agenda items 1 through 38 excluding Item 6, which is moved to the regular agenda.
I still move, and I have to add, 888 pages has to be some kind of record for the amount of background information for the consent agenda, so I didn't get to have any fun this weekend, just read paper all weekend, so.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand? Mahoney?
Aye.
Instruction updates. Brenda Derring's up first, I think. She's got some pictures, I think, ready. Oh, a lot of slides.
Good evening, commissioners. It's not very often that I get to be in the front of, I'm usually at the very end of the meeting, so it's an exciting night for me. So, I haven't been here for a couple of weeks. Again, I want to just point out our different sites that we keep updated on our projects and Twitter, Facebook, and our website. Our projects are progressing well. They should be complete on time or ahead of schedule. We did have a second incident this morning. One of our construction labors was hit in the head and received medical treatment and then returned back to work on that project. Rightaway Management, we are starting small cell deployment this week. You're going to start seeing work along the 42nd and 45th Street corridors from Main Avenue to I-94. Downtown construction around Block 9, the eastbound 3rd Avenue has been closed for safety reasons as that Block 9 increases in height. We have closed down the eastbound lane. We did maintain the westbound lane. That's the side that the parking's on. Also, 2nd Avenue is closed right now in front of Block 9 for the installation of their utility connections. We are also working on the Roberts Alley on the west side. We do have 2nd Avenue closed at Roberts Alley on the west side of Broadway also. That should be opening up at the end of this week. Traffic impacts, 42nd Street at I-94 is now open. The repairs on the approach ramps have been completed, but we will be starting a concrete spot repair between I-94 and 30th Avenue. This will have construction down head-to-head in the, on that corridor while we complete some of those panel repairs. And then 4th Street was also closed this morning there at 6th Avenue for a repair in the transition between the two projects, and that work should be completed by mid-next With all the rain we've had this year, we've seen a couple, we've seen three emergency storm sewer failures, which have caused sinkholes. One at the VA Lift Station outfall, that's already been repaired, along with 18th Avenue at the Retention Pond in the West Acres area. That one has been fixed, and the last one that we'll be looking at is the 33rd Street and 40th Avenue South. With that, I'd like to do, give you an update on the 52nd Avenue. We've got a flyover on that. And so, I'd like to show you the work they've done. We've got 52nd Avenue opened from 45th Street to Veterans Boulevard, so we're getting that all opened. And then, we've got it closed between Veterans and the 63rd, which is the entrance into the Rocking Horse and into Deer Creek. The actual intersection at 63rd is open, but between the two intersections, they're working on. Wanted to make sure that you guys know that we did speed up, they did speed up the video. That was not the speed they're traveling at. So, it's been pretty nice. I've...
When is that last segment going to be done that goes to the river?
Well, oh, in, we've got it slated for about 2023 right now to do the remaining section to Cheyenne Street. There's a few, there are some permits that we need for the bridge structure that are at least a year-to-two-year permit that we'll need to be getting. And then, the next video I'd like to show you is our main avenue video. That one, they're starting at 2nd Street and moving east. Dakota Underground had this project, and as you know, we have everything open from Broadway to 4th Street right now, to east of 4th Street. They had 75 days to complete that, to, they had 75 days to complete the intersection of Broadway at Main, and then they had September 15th to complete the project between 4th Street and Broadway. They were able to complete, to get 29 days of their 30-days incentive for that section. And so, you can see the work that they've been doing. They've got all the work completed. They have a few things that they need, that will need to come back and do once the traffic signal poles come in along with the streetlight poles. Otherwise, the roadway is totally functioning. So, they did receive 29 of the 30-days incentives for the first phase that they've been working in, and then they have completely closed down 2nd Street, and they will have 75 days to complete that, and they can get up to $200,000 in incentive on that also if they can get that open earlier.
Pretty sure that was Joe Burgum that went on that bike in that intersection.
So, any questions?
Questions? 63rd and 52nd Avenue, the pictures that showed it was, you know, traffic was going east again, and that was all tore up to the river, so that will all be redone this year as well, right? I don't know if I heard you correctly, Brenda.
No, there's an asphalt tran, so the 63rd intersection is done, and going west to Cheyenne Street, that's just an asphalt. We have some concrete, and then it's an asphalt transition. And so, our expectations is, is we will be completing that all the way to Cheyenne Street, but there are some core permits, national permits, we have to get for that bridge structure.
But right now, there's gravel between one area and another area there. That'll be completed this fall.
Yep, so between 63rd Street and Veterans. That will be completed this fall yet. So, the new elementary school opening up in Deer Creek, they will be coming from Cheyenne Street.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Good job. I like that video flyover. Was Tony doing that for you, or his drone want to go that fast? No. Probably go twice as fast. We'll go to public hearings. Special assessment of unpaid utility bills. Steve Sprague to explain.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Well, tonight, we have a historic night for you. This will be the first time that we've assessed unpaid utility bills. A little background on this, last October, in preparation for the storm sewer assessment being, or the storm sewer fee being calculated differently and being charged to properties that didn't necessarily have a water meter, we did some research and found that there is a precedent in state law that allows the city to assess unpaid utility bills. And so, the list that you initially saw was the list that we started working with, and that was anybody with an unpaid utility bill in excess of $300 and over a certain period of time, date's old. We started with 56 properties and over $30,000. It's generated quite a, quite a bit of interest from the people that got those letters. As of today, we are down to 17 properties that hadn't paid their utility bill, and we're getting down to about 10, just over $10,000 left that isn't paid. So, we're very pleased and very excited to be able to find this new way of collecting utility bills, and so we'll present that list to you today.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the city commission regarding these bills? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
There a second?
Second, but I have questions.
Mr. Garrick?
What's the term, and is there interest rate over what we're, are we charging interest rate, and what's the term?
It's a, it's a one-year payment, so the full amount becomes due, and there is no interest rate additionally charged.
Any other questions? Mr. Strand?
Thank you. This really surprised me, and I know this action was coming, but I guess, I'll be honest, my initial reaction was that we're just really nickel-diming people sometimes with these assessments for a $200, $300 utility bill. And I understand the bigger picture, but I'd sure hate to be in the shoes of the folks receiving those letters sometimes, and maybe we're working hardships into our considerations. Maybe if you could explain that, Steve?
Sure. We go through our normal process, and these are people that, some, in some cases, there are some different situations. In some cases, there are people that moved into areas where we do not have the water service provided, but we are providing garbage, sewer, forestry, you know, all the other city services, and they just have elected not to pay us. They've just basically ignored us through this time. We send letters that say you're past due. We send letters that say we're going to turn you over to collections, and we got no response. Now, when we said we were going to add it to their property taxes, we did get some, some good response. So, if there's somebody that is in hardship or something like that, we always work with them, make payment arrangements to try to make sure that they can stay current. Most of these people were just not making any payments for extended period of time.
Is there any program for anybody who cannot afford to pay?
Sure. We've, you know, we've always got things that we can explore, that there are ways that people can come up with funds. Generally, they're going to some of the agencies, whether it's a churches group or somebody like that, to get, to get assistance.
Got answer.
So, if I might continue, if somebody goes through collections and they still don't pay it, does a typical collection procedure unfold where it's reported against their credit record and stays there for seven years or so, or for a period of time?
You know, I really can't speak to how the, we use United accounts for these collections, and I don't know what their processes are if they, you know, they don't necessarily put everything out there on, you know, so that it's part of their credit history.
I just wish there was a better way.
I think it's important to remember that the city has provided services to the people that are, that we're working on here. So, you know, it's, everybody else is paying for them to not pay.
They're getting the water, John. I mean...
They're getting the water.
Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye. B, transfer of Class A alcoholic beverage license from ERJ Dining, doing business as Chili's, to Brinker Restaurant Corporation, doing business as Chili's Grill Bar at 3902 13th Avenue, Suite 4402. Steve Sprague.
This is an interesting application just from an industry standpoint. ERJ owned 114 Chili's throughout the nation, and Brinker owned 1,600 Chili's, and Brinker bought out all of ERJ. And so, I just thought that was kind of a fascinating thing. We've gone through the typical background check and everything, and there were no issues with this. It does come to you with a recommendation of approval from the liquor control board.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this transfer? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the recommended motion. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Transfer of licenses, transfer of Class A alcoholic beverage license from SFB Associates, doing business as Cowboy Jack's, to L&amp;D Hospitality, doing business as Cowboy Jack's at 506 Broadway North.
So, this is just a owner that's setting up a new corporation, and it's the same, same owner that had the business before, setting up a new corporation that he's going to operate under once he opens up.
When's he opening?
Soon. That's all he said. When are you opening? Soon.
Went through the board. Do you guys recommend?
Yes.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this transfer? Is anyone present who wishes to speak? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make the recommended motion. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. D, withdrawal, application for Class A club alcoholic beverage license for downtown community partnership, doing business at downtown community partnership at 207 4th Street North, Suite B.
I just wanted to kind of walk the board through this a little bit. This was for the Block 9 Plaza. The DCP was, was applying for a liquor license so that they could respond to an anticipated RFP coming from the Park District. As we worked our way through that, we found out that the Block 9 Plaza will not be allowing a permanent structure there, and liquor licenses are issued to a person and a place, and so we needed a permanent structure there in order to be able to do that. And so, that's why they're withdrawing. And so that's why they're withdrawing. They still intend to reply to the RFP, but utilize the Class E permits that we use when we do licenses off-premise. And the DCP would then just, their goal would be to coordinate for the Park District and use different people with the, the proper licenses.
So do we need to do any action on this, Steve?
According to Nancy at Liquor Control, she recommended that we get a motion to accept the withdrawal so that we have it in the permanent records.
I saw move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Hi.
Pepcorn?
Hi.
Mahoney?
Hi. Hi to me. Renaissance Zone Project for Great Plains One zero zero one Holdings LLC for a new construction project located one zero zero one and one zero one, one northern Pacific Avenue North, twenty-eight Tenth Street North, one oh, ten sixteen First Avenue North and eleven, Eleventh Street North, continued from the regular meeting to seven fifteen, and continued from seven fifteen, seven twenty-nine, eight twelve, regular meetings. Here's your explanation by Jim Kilborn.
Yes, and this is also related to Item F. It's really the same application, applying for both Renaissance Zone and the payment lieu of taxes. So I'll, I mean, you want to take these together when you get to a motion and open hearing on that also. What's proposed here is a, a project on the site of the former Nestor Building along NP Avenue, as well as the current Park Company Building on Tenth Street North. This would be a two-phase project with the Nestor property being developed as early as, or hopefully completed in 2020, followed by the second phase in 2021. The proposal would be a hundred and sixty apartments. There'd be a main floor restaurant of about fifty-five hundred square feet, and about two hundred and thirty parking spots on the site, both interior and exterior. The request, accommodation of the Renaissance Zone and Pilot. If approved, they would continue to pay the property taxes that are on it today. There are about twenty-two thousand dollars a year in property taxes on the two parcels. That would increase when Renaissance Zone would, would be over. And so under our new policy, the property taxes would then gradually increase over ten years. In years six and seven, the property taxes would increase from the twenty-two thousand to sixty-two thousand. And then they would increase each year for the next eight years, reaching three hundred and seventy-nine thousand as the pilot expired. The, the city had sent this to our financial advisors for our policy. They feel it met the but-for test, that it would not occur without the incentives. The estimated return on investment is nine point four percent. And as long as it's between ten to fifteen percent, the, our financial advisor says that's what's needed. However, with this project, when we went to the county with the new state law, is that it requires review of both the Cass County Commission and the school district. The school district did not object to it. The county did not fully support it. They were willing to support the first seven years of the exemptions. And so while we have recommendations of approval on both Renaissance Zone and Pilot this evening, the Kilborn Group and the investors do not know whether or not this project would proceed. So I guess just transparency, even if you approve this, the project may not proceed. So Mike Kalmendinger is here from the Kilborn Group and can address any questions. The recommended motions are to approve both the Renaissance Zone and Pilot.
I, I think we'll separate it. We'll vote on the Renaissance first and then the Pilot second, okay? Mike?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. I'll, I'll provide some thoughts just on all of these products that we have been proposing. They have came through the Tax Exempt Committee and then also the county as well. And they're on tonight's agenda and, and a number of them. So I, I have some specific details about this, this project, which is ten oh one NP Avenue. But some highlights of just all the products together that we have put together and would occur over the next couple of years. Completing the final one in spring of two thousand twenty-two would be the final completion. All these products together do meet the, the most current in focus plan that the community and downtown, you know, downtown community and the, in the, in the entire community has put together for housing goals of downtown Fargo. We are, this application is for the Pilot application and Renaissance Zone application. They have followed the procedures that the Tax Exempt Committee has put in place and approved last February of two thousand nineteen. And, and, and I can tell you that these projects would not be moving forward unless we received the Pilot approval for the projects. And that's, that's, you know, reviewed by the third party. But then also, you know, talking to our banks and receiving financing. You know, there's, there's, those, those run hand in hand with the approval from the third party, but also receiving financing from any banking institution to help these projects move forward. Kilborn Group, I, you know, I, I do like to offer perspective of Kilborn Group. We have worked on over twenty-four projects in downtown Fargo, you know, over our ten to fifteen years of doing projects down here. And we've asked for a Pilot three other times on all of our products. That includes Woodrow Wilson, the Black Building, and Block Nine. The Roche Project was a, was a, was a Renaissance Zone project and a TIF. But these are, you know, but there are many projects that we've completed in downtown Fargo without any incentive. And when we, when we only do that, when we need to, when we need them to move forward. And, and I'd say some highlights is that these, these four projects together will be paying over seven million dollars in property taxes in the next fifteen years. So between, before two thousand thirty-five, there'll be seven million dollar pro- of property taxes paid during that period. And that is a change of, coming out of the Tax Exempt Committee in February of this, of this year. Previously, it was, you know, a hundred percent exemption for five or ten years. And now the recommendation is to start paying taxes during that time period. And that's, and so we will be paying those property taxes during that time. And I'd say another highlight of, if I just take all the products together, the four of them, you know, right now, they're paying forty thousand dollars in property taxes combined. And in year six, if you take all of them, they'll be paying four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in property taxes in year six. And again, those, those four products include ten oh one NP, ten seventeen, the Kessler Project, and then the, the Mercantile Project. That's not on tonight's agenda, but that's a, that's where the Alley Vacation and Renaissance Zone is included. So with that, specifically on the ten oh one NP Avenue, that project is, is a project that is located where there's the current Nestor Bar. And it is in the Park Company lot as well, so it's on that block. And as Jim highlighted, the number of units, we do plan to have a, some commercial space in the corner of NP Avenue and Tenth Street. So any questions that you have?
Questions, Mike? Is there anyone else present who would like to speak? If not, we'll close the public discussion. Do I have a motion on the Renaissance Zone?
So move.
Does there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Hi.
Garrick?
No.
Pepcorn?
Hi.
Mahoney?
Hi. Second part would be the application for a Pilot to the same area. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the Pilot? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the Pilot? If so, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Gary.
So, you know, this commission a long time ago said we weren't going to support more incentives for apartments. When we specifically said downtown, but I think we meant that for all of Fargo. This is a rather large incentive for the two properties to include Kessler. We're looking at six million dollars if the incentives see themselves through. So it's not primary sector. It's apartments, which we said we wouldn't support. And there's no low-income housing, as, as John usually alludes to as well. And another large part about this is, is, you know, we're not the only ones being affected. The county commissions chose to not give the full support. And in the schools, you know, they're going to forego with three million dollars here. So there's a large chunk of that. We're, we're going to be building more schools soon. We're seeing our taxes being increased by both the county and the school board because they don't have enough money, apparently. This is a very large incentive for an apartment building. So that's my, that's my major objection, is we have said as a commission many times we would no longer support apartments. It's not primary sector. There is no low-income housing component for it.
Mr. Chairman? Just a, just a couple of quick things. Commissioner Garrick stated that the school board was going to forego revenue or income or something like that. That's incorrect. They, the, the property keeps paying at their current rate. Isn't that correct, Jim?
Yes, under a new policy, the property would keep paying the current rate. And then I also just want to clarify, you know, that the apartments, the new policy did continue to support both low-income apartments and apartments within the downtown and also near NDSU.
And one, can I just say a couple more quick things? So the, the one thing we have to, this in-focus thing, part of the city is we want to have more housing downtown. John and I, and I think the other commissioners, we support having low income and lots of different type of housing, but this is just one of those kinds. But we have to make an effort, and if we don't do this, then it's going to keep continuing what it is. Flat parking lots, and it's not going to get developed. And so if you could go through those numbers again, so that is not true that the school district or, or the park district or anyone else is going to be losing any revenue. This has no risk to the taxpayers. It says that in the, in the research. There is no risk to the task, taxpayers. That's very important. But can you repeat that again? What the, what the current property taxes paid, that's what continues. Isn't that correct, Jim?
If the current property taxes would continue under our current policy, those are about twenty-two thousand dollars a year. And so about, you know, half of that to the school district, twenty percent each to the city and county, and roughly ten percent to the park district. And then it would increase by year six. It would be up to sixty-two thousand, about three times what it is today.
Mr. Gary.
That's what incentives are. We're foregoing income for the taxpayers. When I build a house, I start paying taxes. When I build a business outside of downtown, I start paying taxes. When I say forego, it's very obvious what I mean. There's six million dollars that we're not going to be collecting from this business. That's not a new statement. So schools are the ones that are mostly impacted by that.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one more thing? So that's an untrue statement because this is not going to get built if we don't do a tax incentive. And so to say that they're going to lose something, it's something they're not going to get. So you can't lose something you're not going to get. So that's a false statement.
Mr. Grinberg.
Jim, so just to clarify, this meets our current policy.
Yes, it does.
And just to reiterate that, you know, we've had discussions at this bench about, you know, whether we're going to do apartments and housing, but we haven't changed the policy. So the application mirrors and been vetted through the Tax Exempt Committee, and it, it follows the policy. That's correct.
It, it does mirror the new policy, and the previous policy was to not require that but-for test. There was no financial review. Our policy now has that. The previous policy was ten years, but it was at a higher percent in years six through ten. With this policy, it's over ten years, but actually it, it increases. So overall, the taxing jurisdictions start to receive more money sooner and over the length of the incentive, receive more money than they would have previously.
So just to, just to add a reinforcement, I have a handout that I'll share. You know, the community of Pelican Rapids, Minnesota is pretty pragmatic and has figured it out. Last week in the Pelican Rapids press, the headline is "Tax Abatement." Question mark. What is it? The underscoring article, it's complicated, that's what. But by most measures and definitions, it does not raise current tax rates on other property owners. And that's exactly the same policy and the impact we have here. It does not impact current property taxpayers by issuing a tax abatement. It's sound, it's well-thought-out, and I just thought you'd like to see a copy of the article of how they're going about their business in Pelican Rapids that mirrors the same goals that we have here. And I always use the example of Block Nine, and Mr. Kalmendinger shared it as well. You know, we were paying roughly three, we were receiving rather roughly three thousand dollars a year on that parking lot where Block Nine is now somewhere in that range. Is that correct, Jim?
Yes.
And look at the impact that's going to have over time when that comes on the tax rolls in its incremental basis. Again, somebody in South Fargo, and their home taxes isn't paying for that cost. It's just we're foregoing the collection on that. And maybe we need a lesson in basic micro and macroeconomics to understand that.
I believe the taxable bond on that is a million dollars when it comes online.
Yes, once it's done, you know, twenty-five years from now, it'll be paying roughly a million dollars a year in property taxes.
Any other discussion? Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. I, first of all, I'd like to commend the Kilborn Group for their amazing investments in our downtown and for, for your vision in, in, in making it a better downtown. It's, it's absolutely bearing out and turning into that. I, I've, about six months ago, this commission passed four to one a, a, a motion that I had advanced that we would study inclusionary housing. And my concern is we haven't done that yet. I'm not sure where we'll land after we study inclusionary housing. And for folks in the audience out there, inclusionary housing, there's about five hundred cities that do this, where if you have incentives for housing, you build into that a component of affordable housing. And, and we just haven't studied it or gotten there or, or ruled it out. And, and that's where I'm at. Our policy does allow this now, but we've also agreed to go forward and, and analyze that approach to housing. So, so one of my concerns is we, we haven't studied the inclusionary housing model to, to, to be clearly guided by policy after that in light of what, what other cities do. And, and that's in the context of, 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 we have an immense need for affordable housing. Us and everybody in the country. So how we, how we get there and how we accomplish that is, is laying, is, is before us to do. But, 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 but I'm, I'm still fighting for affordable housing. Great projects, terrific projects, I, I, and, and their market rate. And whether we can get to the point where we include affordable housing into these market rate projects, I'm not sure we can or will be able to or won't be able to, but that's what I'm advocating for. So that, that's my thoughts. And the last thought I have is these pilots in Fargo evolved decades ago when we were looking at blighted, obliterated downtown and in the midst shortage of housing. We, we have a glut of housing now, of apartments. And, and I'm, I'm just, I, I want us to have that balance, strike that balance where we don't oversaturate the market with, with empty apartments, and then we have other problems. So where I'm landing on this is to, to celebrate the project, to thank the folks for bringing these projects to our community. I will, I, I hope we can get to the point where, where we study inclusionary housing as a component of these proposals, pilots going forward. But in the meantime, I will stand, stand firm that I want to see that information before I vote for them.
Couple of things on the in-focus study did reveal that we need apartment drawing downtown, even though we seem to have quite a few down there. There's need at least for four hundred to five hundred a year downtown area. The vacancy rate is now seven point eight, so we're headed down. We don't have as many apartments that we were going to build. On our HUD's tour, when we went with Nicole out to see these different places, we're not filling them all up. So we now have affordable housing, low-income housing, in fact, John, that are not all filling up. We looked at the over fifty-five affordable housing, and we're going to build another one next year as well. That does fill up very nicely. That, that one fills up really quick. But we do have, it looks like we're getting closer in capacity. And West Fargo has new housing option as well for people that don't have, can't afford it. So that's one of the things I've asked Nicole to look into, is what is our needs right now to that area? And to empty out the high-rise, or if we move people out of the high-rise, we have to have options for people as well. It appears, at least working with HUD, we're starting to do some of that. So I think we are making some progress in that area that's very, very definable. The problem is, as downtown gets busier, more and more people are working downtown, so they do need places to stay. And we find more and more employers are hiring people to downtown. So I think what we've seen on the studies, and I think Mike could concur, there's room for more apartments downtown, take care of the needs of the people in that community. And the downtown's going to grow by four, five thousand people, so we need to continue to look at ways to fill that, so.
If there's no other discussion, roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Hi.
Grinberg?
Hi.
Garrick? Strand?
No.
Mahoney?
Hi. Application, uh, where do we go now?
G?
G, I am sorry. Application filed by Great Plains Antique Holdings for payment in lieu of taxes exemption on a project located at ten seventeen Fourth Avenue North, which applicants will use to an operation in leasing residential apartments, continued from the seven fifteen, seven twenty-nine regular meetings. Then, oh, Jim Kilborn, are you up again?
Yes, this is another Pilot application. It fits with the city policy. I should probably, just to say upfront, this is another project that the county supported the first seven years, but not the full fifteen years of the requested incentive. And so as a result, it's still unknown whether or not this project would proceed. But let me kind of go through it briefly. The project would be located, it's west of that Boys' Rent store on Tenth Street. It's an older one-story building. The proposed development would include sixty-eight apartments and ninety parking spaces. It'd be eleven point six million dollar investment. It'd be eleven point six million dollar investment. Uh, the pilot incentive would follow the, the city policy. It, it did pass the BUT4 test. The estimated rate of return for the investors is nine percent if the full incentives were granted. Uh, there's a, again, there's a one-story building there. They're paying ten thousand dollars a year in property taxes, and they would continue to pay that for the first five years. In years six and seven, they would be paying twenty-five thousand dollars a year in property taxes, and then that would gradually increase over the next eight years up to a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, uh, a year in property taxes. I'll ask, uh, Mike, if you want to, uh, describe this project in any, uh, any further detail.
Sure. Again, this project is located at ten seventeen Fourth Avenue, uh, so that would be directly north of where Line Three Hundred is located or directly west of the Dakota Boys Ranch, uh, Ranch Thrift Store. And it's a, there's an existing one-story building in that location. We, uh, we have plans to build sixty-five apartment units, and there will be, uh, parking available onsite, uh, in this location, some, uh, covered parking and some, um, outdoor parking. So I think that concludes, uh, the, the program that would happen at this, in this location.
Mr. Grinberg, you got a question?
Yes, um, Mike, earlier you cited a, you know, a twenty-four projects Kilborn has been involved with downtown.
Yes.
Um, with pending, assuming this is a passed or adopted, what would be the number that you've received with incentives of the twenty-four? I think it's important the public understand, uh, the difference between what you've applied for and the BUT4 and the reasons why versus the number of investments you've made without the incentives.
Yeah, so out of the, out of the twenty-four, with these, you know, with the four projects that we're going to be bringing to the commission, uh, uh, between now and the end of September, there's, that'd be a total of twenty-eight projects, uh, and six of them would be, uh, would have a pilot application, and two of them would have, uh, two of them would have a TIF.
So that would be eight or combination?
Yes, a combination, a total of, a total of eight.
Eight out of twenty-eight.
Yes.
Many of, many of those received the five-year Renaissance Zone, but, um, we're talking on that.
So Mike, in the past, you've made the offer, if any of the commissioners wanted to come and meet with you and review any of these, you'd be happy to do that confidentially, show them, uh, show any of us what, so is that offer still open, that we could do that?
Uh, yes, absolutely. We, I, and in fact, we had a, I would say a constructive meeting with the county, uh, with Jim Gilmore facilitating that discussion, uh, brought the information from a third-party review, uh, and the two members of the city, of the county commission attended that meeting as well. And during that meeting, you know, it was very clear to them, looking at the, at the financials of these projects, that they would not be, receive, uh, any bank financing unless the products received the pilot incentive. And that was a, you know, that well, well worth all of our, our hours worth of time to learn more about the project, and I'd be, you know, would be happy to do that again.
Can I ask one more? So hypothetically, if you didn't get this pilot, one of the, one of the options would be you wouldn't do the project, but also you could, you know, shrink it. That, is that, is that a correct statement, something like that?
Yes, each of these locations, you know, cer- certainly have the ability to build a smaller project that has, you know, larger setbacks off of the property line, which allow for a lower construction cost. That does not meet any of the, you know, uh, the, the city goals for what they're, what, what they want for, uh, you know, walkability in our downtown. And so there are ways that you could, we could build a smaller project in this location. And I think that's one of the outcomes of the tax-exempt, you know, committee, is that, you know, the larger projects, they do start paying property taxes in year six, right after the Renaissance Zone, to, you know, to support the tax payments that needed.
Thank you. Can I just add one more editorial comment? So even though, uh, so, so most cities in the country would kill to have the Kilborn Group do half of these projects, and so we're so fortunate, and, and I, uh, we wish they would be around forever, but that isn't how it is. And so, uh, I would encourage everybody because we need to take advantage of them as long as we're here. We hope that they're here for a long time, uh, a very long time, but, but things don't always continue forever. And I, I am not sure we always appreciate how fortunate we are, the things, and it started with the Nor-, uh, what was it called, Northern School Supply Building a long time ago. And so, uh, we are very fortunate, and if you, I'm sure if the mayor went to meetings and you told them what we have going on and the group that's helping us, uh, they would all be very envious. And that's the end of my editorial comment. Thank you.
Is anybody else publicly want to speak to this? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick? Strand?
Oh.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item H, Renaissance Zone Project for DFI Kessler Project, uh, DFI BJ LLC for New Construction Project located at six seventeen and six twenty-one First Avenue North and six twenty-four Second Avenue North, continued from the seven fifteen, seven twenty-nine and eight twelve regular meetings. Jim Gilmore, again?
Um, this project, um, there's two applications here, um, in a row. One has to do a Renaissance Zone that would be on both the, uh, referred to as the Kessler North Site and the other on the Kessler South Site, and I'll kind of give you the background first, or for why there's kind of two applications for two different, uh, components of this project. Um, in, in two thousand and fifteen, the city approved a renewal plan, uh, for this area with the goal of creating a mixed-use development to replace what was then, uh, just all surface parking lots. So in two thousand and fifteen, the, uh, entire property taxes paid in this area was about fifty-eight hundred dollars, keeping in mind that, uh, the city lots were tax-exempt. At that point, uh, the city owned, uh, a portion of that what's labeled as Roberts. You can see, if you look closely, there's some Jersey barriers that go through. That was the property line as well as the Kessler North Watt. Uh, in two thousand and sixteen, we, uh, went out with an RFP for, uh, to redevelop this site to try to get a city-owned, uh, parking facility of at least four hundred spots, and, uh, a mixed-use, uh, development with that, uh, with the city having that Roberts, uh, and Kessler North, uh, parcels available. Uh, we entered into, uh, an agreement with, with Kilborn Group, uh, we accepted their proposal, and the, um, at that point, uh, the Roberts parcel was owned in part by Kilborn, and, uh, the other area was owned by the city, and that was what was, uh, to get underway. The, uh, as part of that agreement, they built on the Roberts site a four-hundred-and-fifty-fourth car parking garage and, uh, wrapped it with commercial development on the main floor and apartments above. Uh, part of that agreement, uh, was that they would be limited in their, uh, property tax exemptions, uh, to only the five-year Renaissance Zone on that Roberts site and as well as the Kessler North Site. Um, in two thousand and eighteen, the, uh, Roberts, uh, building opened with the commercial space and the apartments. Uh, it was, while it was in the renewal plan, uh, the Dillard parcel was actually owned by a different party. Uh, Kilborn Group had acquired that and, uh, developed that, uh, as, um, an apartment building, but, uh, received the five-year Renaissance Zone. Uh, they might have been eligible for pilot, they did not apply for that. Uh, they were able to make it work with just, I mean, for, uh, commercial space and apartments, and that building, I believe, is opening, uh, as, as we speak, late this fall. Um, so, um, so this is the final, uh, piece of this, uh, longer-term development. Uh, the Kessler South parcel was not in the TIF, and was not subject to the limitation of how much it could apply for. And so what you have before you tonight is an application for the five-year Renaissance Zone that would be on both the Kessler North Site and the Kessler South Site, and a pilot, um, application that would be exclusive to the, a Kessler South Site, uh, because, again, because of that restriction in our development agreement, uh, they're only applying for the five years on the, the North Parcel. Uh, as you look at how this project will then unfold, is that, again, we, it goes from paying fifty-eight hundred dollars a year in property taxes to what we'll have now is, uh, eleven million dollars in private sector development on the Roberts Site with a five-year incentive. Um, it's about sixteen million dollars on the Dillard Site, uh, with the five-year Renaissance Zone, and the Kessler North and South Site will have a combined seventeen million dollars estimated value. So, uh, that's about forty-four million dollars in, in value that as these exemptions expire, we'll start to pay, uh, six hundred, over six hundred thousand dollars a year in, in property taxes to the various taxing jurisdictions as these, uh, exemptions expire. The, uh, proposal is to start this fall, uh, and complete the project by two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, this one also, the county limited the exemption to seven years. Uh, however, because I think some of the contractual obligations on Kessler North, uh, it appears that this one, uh, that amount of incentive is sufficient to move forward. Um, the, uh, did the BUT4 test on this, it also, the rate of return was below ten percent. Uh, yeah. See, um, I'll just ask Mike if there's anything else you want to add, add to this. I believe this one, uh, we, some drawings here of, uh, what, uh, the building would look like, and it'll extend, uh, from Second Avenue North to First Avenue North, and maybe Mike can just address the number of apartments and parking spaces and commercial space. I don't...
Yes, uh, again, this project is located right next to what was the old Avalon Building in downtown Fargo. We call that the Stone Building now, so it's, uh, right adjacent to that historic structure. And we, uh, we were able to recently, uh, purchase the, uh, the parking, the surface parking lot, that's, that's west of the, of that historic stone building. Um, that does allow us the opportunity to build one structure in this location, and, uh, so that's what our proposal is tonight, is to, uh, just to, is to move forward with one, one project in this entire location. And it would have about ninety-five apartment units. We would have retail on the first floor. You know, this is right in, uh, this would follow the in-focus plans of where the retail corridors would be along First Avenue and Second Avenue. Also, uh, some, uh, small retail spaces in the, along the alleyway. So when you go to Roco, uh, Roco Project right now and into Roberts Alley, you see that there's, uh, three or four retail locations in that, you know, along there, plus, you know, all the other landowners that are doing retail or access to their buildings from that location. We, we're going to support that overall vision of Roberts Alley in this project as well.
And when present, we should speak to the Renaissance Zone Project, other than Mike? If not, we'll close the, uh, public hearing. This is item H. Do I have a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Is there a move and seconded? Any discussion?
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Of course.
And maybe it's for Jim and maybe it's for Mike, but how long were those, were those flat parking lots? Do you know, do you, do we have the dates, especially the, I don't know if you remember off the top of your head, but, but to me, it's interesting because they, it seemed like a long time.
I think, um, the, uh, Roberts Site, I believe, was a former library site, and I think that was, probably went down in the nineteen seventies. So I think a lot of this was surface parking back to the nineteen seventies or possibly beyond.
And I guess my point is, some people have said, well, if we don't do anything, something will develop there. And, uh, well, not so far, you know? I, I think it's been a lot of opportunity, uh, for a very long time, and to say, well, we don't need to do anything because something will happen. And, uh, to me, uh, that's, that's, that's not how it's gone. Thank you.
Mr. Garrick?
Market will happen. It'll grow when it's, when the market supports it. Asking for incentives just proves that the market can't support it. We're inflating the values downtown. That's why we can't get builders to build at a reasonable price because they've inflated the market with it. More and more apartments going into places where it's not sustainable with the current market. If you want to build a house, if you want to build a business, if you want to build anything in the city of Fargo, or anywhere else for that matter, you go where it's economically feasible. Right now, we're inflating the market down there, you're, you're seeing a bubble because you have longer and longer incentives. When that bubble bursts, you're going to see blight like in two thousand. That's the reason for voting against these incentives.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, uh, Mayor. I'm, Commissioner Pepcorn, I'm really glad you mentioned that because here's what I'll add to that conversation. And by the way, I, I really, uh, celebrate and, and encourage us Renaissance applications and projects with five years, they're, they pay off well, in my opinion. But if only we had the Carnegie Library there still, we would have the Kilborn Group re, rehabbing a, a historic building beyond our comprehension if we didn't turn them all into parking lots in the seventies. So we lost a lot of assets, and, and one of the things that Kilborn Group does is, is really, uh, breathe life into historic buildings too. So I just wanted to add that to that. We lost a lot, so we gained a parking lot, uh, where the Roco is now instead of the Carnegie Library, which I guess is, we should look at the pictures of it.
I think that parking ramp is certainly was a key. These other development could not have happened because it needs, all this development needs parking, and so the city building a parking garage at that location allowed, uh, this development to occur. Otherwise, we needed surface parking to remain.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
No.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item I, application by the Kessler Project for a payment in lieu of taxes exemption for the project located at six twenty-fourth Second Avenue North, six twenty-one First Avenue North, and six seventeen First Avenue North, which the applicant will use the operation of leasing residential apartments, commercial space, continued from the seven fifteen, seven twenty-nine regular meetings. Jim, can you explain as well?
This is that same application. Um, what this would be is to provide a ten-year, uh, payment in lieu of taxes beyond the five-year Renaissance Zone. Uh, when we looked at this application, you know, together, uh, they'll be paying, you know, no, no taxes for the first five years, however, they'll start to pay a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year approximately on the North Building. In year six, that'll remain and go on. Um, and so this particular building would stay at, uh, zero percent for ten years. So blended together, it seems to meet our policy and the recommendation of the Tax Exempt Committee, uh, was to approve it. Uh, the county supported the seven years and, um, including the first five years with the Renaissance Zone. So there, your recommendation is to, uh, approve the ten-year payment in lieu of taxes according to the payment schedule in the application.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? Come over to the other podium, please.
I have a hard time just trying to sit there and bite my tongue, but, uh, I don't...
What's your name? What's your name?
My name is Bruce Book, also live in South Fargo.
Okay.
I wish you would give the normal taxpayer the same benefit that you've given these gentlemen. Um, I don't know how much tax money is being given away. Is there, is there a figure that you've got?
Mr. Chairman, the answer is zero. Zero. There's no tax money being given away.
But then I guess when this tax money is actually, goes in effect, is there a benefit to the city as far as lowering our taxes as a citizen?
Mr. Chairman, can I answer that?
Go ahead.
The benefit of that, this will be a hundredfold. People will be living downtown. Uh, if these people lived in new developments at, on the edge of town, we'd have to add infrastructure, fire halls, police, uh, so this is...
Do we actually, does a normal taxpayer then actually get a benefit after five years? Does that some money go back into the general fund?
Absolutely.
Where it lowers our taxes?
Jim, Jim has an answer to that. Jim?
It's, is, uh, with this particular one, uh, they would go into the TIF District, would help pay for the parking, uh, ramp downtown, and then after that's paid for, uh, yes.
So you're talking about how many years then?
I think there are seventeen years left on the parking ramp. Um, some of the other projects downtown, after five years, uh, then, uh, we all benefit from that. Uh, one of the things I'd like to point to is the fact that before the Renaissance Zone, uh, the property taxes or value downtown was about two hundred million. Now it's over six hundred million. So the downtown is paying over four million dollars a year more in taxes than it was paying, uh, you know, before this redevelopment started.
But then as a normal...
If that, let me finish. If that value hadn't increased, our property taxes would all be four percent higher than they are today.
But my property taxes keep on going up.
And they would have, I think they would have gone up even more if we had not had this downtown development.
See, and that's what, I guess, when I have a cup of coffee with friends or whatever, everybody's saying, you know, it just keeps on going up. I don't deny these gentlemen actually doing something, but sooner or later, you know, the normal citizen would like to see some type of a benefit from that directly rather than behind the curtain or smoking mirrors.
So if you don't have growth in a community, what happens is you do have to increase taxes because you don't have that growth.
Well, my taxes are going up anyway, sir.
Just let me finish. So on tax exemptions of valued property of $10 million, that has now gone up to $328 million, and those people pay taxes. If you look at a recent TIF that we had on Matrix in which they just came off the value, in which the value of their property is 230,000 when it started, they're now paying taxes of 2 million. So yes, that does help the taxpayer. The third item, let me finish, is since Fargo has continued to push development and things going on, residential used to pay 52% of the tax burden. Now you pay 48%. So we continue to march that down and we make commercial pay more. So yes, it does benefit the normal guy.
I guess I wish I would receive or see that directly in a shorter period of time than probably five, 10, 15 years. Because I would think, and I had some apartments where previously we lived, after seven or 10 years, you sell them off so you maximize the tax benefit, and the next one comes in. So I'm not reassured that these gentlemen, I hope they make a profit, but I'm not reassured that in some cases, it's really benefiting the normal taxpayer like myself.
Can buy sometime, and we'll go through the figures if you'd like.
Say what, sir?
I said, can buy sometime, and we'll go through the figures, be happy to do that with you.
We'll do that. Thank you. Thank you for the time.
Mr. Garrick?
I think that his sentiment is what a lot of people are feeling. And we talk about how the Renaissance Zone helped downtown dramatically, which it did. That was a five-year exemption. It was only supposed to go on for a certain period of time. Now we're offering 20 and 25-year exemptions that are supposed to give the same bump. That's what a bubble is. You first, you have a five-year exemption, it makes growth happen. Then we say, oh, well, five is good, 10 must be better, 15 must be better, 25 must be better. So we're trying to get the same equivalent of return, but we're giving away much more years. So a guy like you will never see a benefit of a 25-year incentive because it's not the business's fault. It's us for offering it, okay? We need to start rearing back on these incentives and allow the people of Fargo to feel that benefit of the increased values because we are giving incentives at a very rapid rate. People are seeing higher and higher property taxes on their homes or their small businesses, and then looking around saying, we're not, I don't get an incentive when I build a garage on my home. Or if I build a small business, a small construction company, for example, I don't get an incentive for that. Okay? So I understand the sentiment, and I think it's very arguable that your taxes will be 4% higher without the incentives, okay? We're seeing larger and larger growth, which costs money. With more people in downtown Fargo, it's not the same price tag as it was for firefighting in downtown Fargo that it used to be. It's much bigger. There's way more police officers down in downtown than there used to be because it's much bigger with people, okay? Much more services go on downtown than used to go on. Even snow removal has become more and more expensive, okay? So it's not as though the growth downtown is, doesn't cost the taxpayer anything. Of course it does. The Broadway project was tens of millions of dollars to expand the pipes that were from downtown and had to go up through Broadway, up to the sewer plant. Okay? So it's not as though this growth costs nothing. That is absurd. And it does cost taxpayers something, and we want to see as taxpayers that benefit come to us if we're going to give away these tax breaks.
Jim, what's the length of the pilot, please?
Yeah, there'd be five years Renaissance zone and then 10-year pilot after that.
We're not talking 25 years.
Total of 15 years.
Fifteen, yeah.
We're just talking tonight. We're just talking 15. Thanks. Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Buchholz, you know, and Commissioner Garrick, thank you for bringing this common concern to us because it is really out there a lot. Folks are wondering, and I heard it on a TV show the other night, why don't we do more for, this is a little off-topic, so bear with me for, I'll try to be quick, but I'm suspecting this is why Commissioner Pepcorn has moved item number six from the consent to the regular gender. People have this notion, we don't do anything for the homeowners. Well, we actually do. But we don't maybe do a good enough job telling them what we do and telling them how to qualify for what we do. So for, as of July of last year, we had $203 million on the books of pilots. We also had $105 million in new residence tax breaks. So that's, we need to inform the public better what we do for homeowners. Now, I think that we should have a discussion, listen to your concerns, and we should have a discussion, is, is a two-year tax break for homeowners equivalent to what we do for the commercial world? And that'd be a good avenue for us to explore. We have another $14 million last year in remodeling tax breaks for folks to get five years tax breaks. We'll see that on item number six. So we do do this. We maybe don't do enough, or maybe we don't tell people adequately what we allow for homeowners or for hardships or for paying specials and so on. I think it'd be good for us to have this discussion further, though, and see what more can we do for homeowners like we do for the commercial world and see where we land. We might take your concerns and leverage it into more gain, maybe. But thank you for sharing that.
Close public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Move in second.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick? Strand? Mahoney?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, could I make the motion that we continue J, K, and L, all in one motion?
Second. Moved in second. Is any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item M, then, Development Plan for Tax Increment Financing District 2019-02 for property northeast of 11th Avenue North and University Drive North and other sites in Roosevelt Neighborhood. Jim, you're up here all night, huh?
Yes. I know you've seen this project before. It's the Roars Newman Center redevelopment project on the corner of University and 12th Avenue North. You've given us direction to prepare a renewal plan, which we've done. It's documented that the blighted conditions in that area and also put together a plan for how we would use tax increment money that would be generated in this area. As you can see, now it's all zoned, multifamily. What we've done, though, is there's really two components to this renewal plan. The first would be provide assistance to the developer for the development of housing on the, on that block. The other would be to use a portion of the money to do some property acquisition, possibly clearance elsewhere in the Roosevelt neighborhood to try to create some other single-family housing opportunities somewhere in this area. And so the areas align in the plan. It includes everything in the Roosevelt neighborhood excluding what is west of Barrett Street where it's more zoned for redevelopment. This is the land use plan for the area, and this is, kind of shows the project. How the TIF would work is that there's four different lots on this. And so TIF revenue from Lot 2, which should be developed by Roars, and Lot 3, which would be townhomes developed by Roars, would go into providing, paying for certain costs that the developer has incurred to develop the site. The faith pays student housing that, even though it's owned by the church because it's used for housing and not religious purposes, would pay property taxes. In addition, Lot 4, if additional townhomes were developed, that money would also, would not go to the developer. Developer would receive only increment received from Lots 2 and 3. The request from the developer was for $950,000 plus the city's administration fee plus interim interest. And we, but this development agreement would cap, cap the amount of assistance at what was received for only a 10-year period once the project was completed. So the project itself would begin this fall, wherever most of the development that would pay property taxes would not be complete until 2021. That's really a two-year build on this entire site. We did do a financial review on this. It did meet the BUT4 test. And I think you're pretty familiar with this, with this project. We did receive one comment from Sterling Properties. They also have rental units in this area, and they were opposed to apartments receiving incentives at this time. They cited the fact that they, their rents have been down 1% this past year. They were trying to answer any questions on the development agreement. The recommended motion is to adopt the renewal plan and developer agreement. And maybe Eric can address this. There are a couple kind of more, less substantive changes in the development agreement. So I think what we were asking for is basically approve the form of the development agreement. If you're comfortable with city attorney making those changes or I want to, we could bring the entire agreement back to you at some point in the future. There are more editorial changes, I think, and clarification changes, though, but wanted to make you aware that, for instance, our first draft didn't have that Lot 4. That was probably the only substantive change is we're pulling out that Lot 4. We had not done that previously. Something we missed.
Any questions of Jim? Is this a public hearing?
Yes. Public hearing on renewal plan and the development agreement.
Anyone wish to speak to this renewal plan? Anybody who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Maybe, well, just one more comment. I forgot, the county, Cass County, did review this, and they did fully support the full 10-year exemption beyond the completion. So this one, they were more favorable for than they were for the Kilborn projects.
Have a motion?
I'll move for approval and a question. Second? If there's a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Who puts a question?
So Jim, this is the conclusion of countless hours of effort and decision-making. This is the last decision to move this project forward.
Correct. Any other comments?
Can I make a quick comment? I'm going to vote, I'm going to oppose it, and the main reason is the Tax Exempt Review Committee voted 100% in favor of the TIF. Nobody was in favor of the $300,000 assistance for future single-family acquisition for renewal. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Strand?
Thank you. It's, Commissioner Grinberg, you're right, there were a lot of hours put into this. And I don't know that anybody won in this process. The neighborhood didn't win, the developer didn't necessarily win, but we found a major compromise that we could go forward with. Ordinarily, I wouldn't have supported the TIF except for the experiment we're doing to see if we can do something for the neighborhood. And I hope we can, and we don't know yet, that that $300,000 will go very far. But it's, I want to, I want to just really commend all the parties. I think Larry Nygaard, maybe you want to address us, but I want to say this is the fifth or so iteration of this plan. And then I have one question to pose to you. How assuredly are we to get the Lot 4, those final set of townhouses built? Or what will it take to have that actually happen?
Let's start with the plan iteration. I would say it's closer to 50 iterations that we've seen. You might have only seen five of them, but, yeah, we worked back and forth, and you all know that. But we're happy to be here tonight with a plan that I think got pretty widespread support from all the people involved. So we're happy about that. In terms of the, the next group of townhomes, as you know, these are going to be for sale. The homes we're going to build on Lot 3 are for sale. We don't know the market. We're hopeful that, that there's as many people interested in owning homes in this area as there have been in renting them in previous years. So it's an experiment for us, but we have an agreement with the Diocese that should we be successful on the construction of the first seven and the sale of those, that we can branch off and do four more into what's known as Lot 4 on your map. So I guess the market will tell, and we expect those to come on the market probably in the summer of 2020. Time those with the completion of the rest of the project.
And if I might continue, I think when I recall, Commissioner Grinberg made the motion a while back that sent us down this path. You, you added to that motion an examination or a study of some existing buildings, maybe they could be saved or moved?
Sure.
And if you could just update it. I don't know if that happened or not, or was possible.
I know they went, the, both the neighborhood and representatives from the city toured all the homes that were there, and I think they identified two, two homes that had moving potential. I don't know if the decision has been made to move those or not, but we've spared them from the wrecking ball thus far. And, and so we're going to do whatever they decide they want to do with those. Save them if they decide in the end to get rid of them, that's what we'll do.
Anything I could just add?
Grinberg?
Let's understand there aren't any available lots in the area as well, so that's another complicating factor.
The planning department put out an RFP for available lots in the Roosevelt neighborhood. There were no responses received from within the neighborhood. I think there were a couple options in other places in the town. The houses that Roars would be on their site, building inspections took a look at that, and unfortunately, they were in more of a, you know, marginal to poor condition in terms of key components of the house and did not see the, you know, the value in moving them. There were two that the church still owns that are still standing where there might be some potential. But again, it's trying to find a lot, and what, the reality is that the cost to move a house is probably as high as building new. When you think of the value of a house, so much of it, the value is in your foundation and your lot. And so moving the house unless it is extremely expensive home with a lot of high-quality finishes doesn't usually, usually isn't feasible.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Strand? Have you? Nope. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
No.
Pepcorn?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item 41, as indicated in my letter, Barry Ametson was one of the recommendations for my appointment. He is no longer able to accept the appointment, so my recommendation is instead to appoint Cody Severson for a three-year term and Adam Martin to fill an expired term that ends in July 1, 2020. You have my recommendations. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 6, applications for property tax exemptions. The names are in the, are item. Explanation by Commissioner Pepcorn.
Thank you. I just wanted to, what John was talking about earlier, I just wanted to point out that we do tax exemptions for, obviously, for new construction, and this is for remodeling their five-year, and just wanted to point that out just so people know. And I think, I agree with John that we need to tell the story a little bit more. I think that might be part of it. And I do want to say that I support the low-income and workforce housing in the downtown. I think there's, it isn't just us. There's going to be a multiple number of solutions. The Land Trust, but also working with HUD, and, I mean, there's lots of things that we need to do. So it isn't just us, and I think we want to make sure we're, we're participating. But, all right, thank you. That's, that's enough to talk today.
Any other discussion? Just so you know, on a homeowner's valuation, they get a tax exemption of the improvement